Okay, we'll start our regular council meeting right now and we'll call the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone and want to say thanks to the Oaks Tree Company for coming in, giving us a presentation. We call the roll, please.
Mr. Bachmann.
Here.
Henning.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
And Stevens.
Here. We have the clerk's report, please.
You have the council meeting, council meeting minutes of January 6th, 2022.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. We have no old business tonight. We have a couple pieces of new business. Looks like we have one ordinance. And would you read that ordinance, please? Elaine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you the proposed retire-rehire policy. We found that rehiring retired specialized employees have become more common recently due to labor shortages as well as the expense to replace the skill level with a new employee. Staff does see a benefit for both the city and the employee in providing this practice, but understands that it also needs to provide equitable treatment among employees who want to retire-rehire. That's why we're presenting you today with the retire-rehire policy that was developed and reviewed by staff.
Have we ever had such a policy?
We have not. Not a formal policy, as far as I know.
Elaine, I just have one question.
Yes.
Retired, rehired retirees will be subject to a 12.5% reduction. Now, when you're rehired, you don't, the city doesn't have to pay into PERS anymore, right? The way I understand it, Dennis, you can probably answer this as well as anybody on, when a re-elected person, when an elected person retires and don't the PERS go away? Or doesn't the PERS go away? Excuse me.
No, it does not. We would still be paying into the retirement system.
For both sides? I mean, the employee pays in and the city?
The employee would be able to pay into their deferred compensation, but the city would still be responsible for, for PERS.
Oh, okay. I'll move for approval.
Did I?
Any other discussion or? Any questions for Elaine on this?
I mean, what was the, or the 12, like, is there a thing? Is there a study for the 12.5% reduction? Like, what is the reasoning for that?
Sure. So with the 12.5%, we did look across other cities to see what they were doing, but the 12.5% does provide the city an incentive because the employee is basically getting their retirement plus their salary. So they're benefiting where the city with the 12.5%, the employee, that's where the city benefits and the employee benefits because they do not have to go through the hiring process and to go through that rigmarole.
So there's no, like, standard?
The 12%, we did look at basically, honestly, we did look across the other cities to see what they were doing. That is correct.
Like Inglewood, for example?
I don't know if Inglewood has a set policy. They do more based on each employee on an individual basis where we wanted to provide, you know, equitable across the board. So that's why we wanted to put a standard percent on it. I do believe Van Delya did put the 12.5%.
Does this include elected officials?
It does not. That's right. I don't know if it'd be worth it for you.
I don't know if this enters into this policy or not. Is there a time period at which the person has to stay out before they actually come back?
Not anymore. Opers did used to have a policy where you were able to be rehired for, I believe it was at least three months, but that has since gone away since they've seen the need and the labor shortages.
Back in December, when I was going through my paperwork for retiring, if I were to be rehired at Wright State, I would lose two months of benefit compensation if I were to be rehired back in January. So I had to sit out or stay away from university for two months.
And that may have been a university policy or with Opers because you were picking up their benefits and not necessarily taking, in your case, Wright State's.
I was talking to the guys in Columbus on that to find out what, what the situation would be. I wasn't planning on going back, but that's what they were telling me.
And it may, of course, if, as you become Medicare age, you know, Medicare eligible age, your situation may change because you may need to pick up, or you may want to pick up insurance because it's more of a cost benefit for you. So there are multiple situations where I can't necessarily say that your situation would be the exact situation of somebody else.
No, I was just, from the standpoint of, I did know if that was still an impacted portion of rehiring or not for, under Opers.
Not that I'm aware of, no. Again, there is no wait period. If you were to pick up benefits through Opers or pick up benefits through Wright State, there may be a, may be certain circumstances under that.
I may have missed your answer when we were talking about the 12.5%. I know that you looked at other jurisdictions to see what they did. Do you know what their rationale was for how they arrived at it? Or was it just an arbitrary figure that looked good?
No. Amanda, do you?
So we also looked at the cost of health insurance to the city. That's it. Okay, thank you. So we looked at the cost of health insurance to the city and it balanced out. If the salary was reduced by the 12, was it 12.5%? I think it was 14% or something?
Correct.
That we were paying for, for the health benefit if the employee continued to take health insurance. So that's where that?
Ultimately, we save money as a, as a city.
That's absolutely, yes.
Okay. That was the bottom line I was looking for.
Sure.
Thank you. So any other questions or comments for Elaine on this or for Amanda?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. Thank you for your work on that. And it looks like we have two resolutions. Will you read the first, please?
Resolution R 012214, a resolution affirming appointment of members to the Clayton Records Commission.
So I'm standing up here for you for this one. Staff requests confirming the Record Commission members, which includes myself as appointed by the city manager, the finance director, our legal, our law director, as well as our, our citizen member, which includes Ms. Catherine Springer.
I just have one question, and I don't like beating a broken drum.
That's okay.
But this is the second meeting in a row we've appointed someone to a committee, and I don't know if we ask for the citizens interested to send in a resume or anything. Now, excuse me, Dan Foley is a very close friend of mine. I've known Dan for years, and I don't think he was a bad choice. I don't know this lady, and I'm sure she's a fine choice, too. But I think that we're setting precedent here where we're appointing rather than asking for applications. Is that correct, Elaine, or is that wrong?
That is correct. Catherine, we actually convened this committee for the first time last year in a while. I mean, it had been 2020, 2019?
I think Catherine's been on it for two years.
Two years.
If I remember correctly, we're required to meet at once every six months. So we meet basically twice a year. And I know Catherine was on it at least last year, maybe the year before that.
I believe you're correct that it has been.
But Dan was appointed to the Planning Commission, as I recall, or the Board of Zoning Appeals, one or the other.
It was, it was the Planning Commission. He, he took a seat on the Planning Commission. So typically, unless there is someone who's given us notice that they don't want, they want to no longer be on the board, or if city council decides they don't want someone to be on the board any longer, we typically just reappoint whoever is there because we assume that council is happy with who's there. If it is going to be the direction of council that every time a seat comes open, you want it advertised, we can absolutely do that. And whoever is on, in the seat can just reapply, and if council wants to reappoint that person, that's fine.
I, I thought that's what we always did, Amanda. I, I mean, I know that we've read applications from as many as 10 or 12 people for a spot on different boards. And I know that Dan has only lived in the city of Clayton a year and a half or so. When his father moved to Friendship Village, they moved into, into the city. But, and like I said, I, I think that was a great appointment. I wouldn't argue with the, the appointment, but excepted the way it was done. And the same with, with Catherine Springer, whom I, I don't know from the man in the moon, but I don't think, anyway. But at the same breath, I'll move for approval, Elaine.
Second.
Well, well, before we, before we go forward, I mean, maybe we save this discussion for another time, but are you proposing that we do something different?
I, I just think that, that it was city policy that we always ask citizens if they're interested in the position, and then the staff picks the one that they prefer and possibly?
We did that for Vance. You're right. We did it for Vance when he left the Planning Commission in, like, August.
And we did it for the Charter Commission and a number of, before that, we've done it before, too. I don't know if that's in the, the bylaws that we were just presenting or not. Martina?
There's no requirement to interview, but of course, if you want to have that policy and procedure, you can do that.
Well, I would say since Tim's made the motion, and I do know Catherine, she's a good choice. I think most of us know her, maybe not Tim, but I think most, some of us know her. Maybe going forward, we kind of draft up something that, kind of guidelines? I don't know if the? If we do, though, let's be careful that we don't paint ourselves in a corner because we haven't, in the past, received a lot of interest from the public in serving on commissions. So we don't want to be in a place where we can't appoint anybody. So I'm not opposed to what you're saying, Tim. I'm just saying, let's make sure when we draft it that we, if nobody applies, that we can go ahead and select somebody. Or if someone that would be, because I do think on some of these things, maybe not all the committees, but on some of the committees, there is, is or should be minimum qualifications. So I think what you're saying, you know, if we get 10 people that no, you know, no one has good qualifications for, I think it'd be against our own best interest to put, you know, to put one of them on it.
Yeah, well, just to clarify my beaten, broken drum statement, as cleaning out our office the other day, I found a paper from 2000, the Inglewood Independent, where Ron Nunnery wrote an article about Gorman complaining about the city appointing the same people to councils all the time. So this isn't something that just happened. It's, it's at least 22 years old. And nothing's changed in 22 years, Dennis.
Now he can write another 22 years later, saying Clayton continues this. I second.
Okay. Motion to appoint Catherine Springer, made by Tim and, made by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. Okay, and we have another resolution?
Resolution R 012215, a resolution to authorize and approve an agreement with Montgomery County to provide emergency preparedness, homeland security, and emergency management services for the city of Clayton, Ohio.
This is the agreement that all of the municipalities in Montgomery County signed with the county to be able to provide emergency management services.
I'll move for approval.
I just have a question. I called you on this afternoon.
Yes, sir.
If you read that the seven members on the board, it calls for a county commissioner, four chief executives of the municipal corporations, and one non-elected official or representative. Now, and I ask you today, none of the city managers are elected.
No.
You are the chief executive officers.
Yes.
So, I mean, can a, let's see, there's got to be four. Can a fifth city manager be the non-elected representative?
I'm sure it could be.
Or do you all get together and, and take applications and appoint another committee member?
So our representative, our representative to the advisory board has always been Chief Garber. He's the one that's the representative. And then they kind of select amongst themselves who's on that executive board.
I'll second Kenny's motion.
Motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Gorman to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous also. Okay, that looks like all the new business we have for tonight. City managers report. Amanda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a couple items for you this evening. First, I sent an email out to you earlier this week concerning possibly doing why I serve videos as part of our, as part of our community outreach. I don't know if anyone is interested. I've only heard from Dennis. So if anyone else is interested in doing those, just let me know, and I'll get with Jack, and we can start getting those scheduled. I think that it would be good for the community so they all know why people want to serve the city of Clayton. Just a reminder, we have a work session scheduled for 6:30 PM, excuse me, February 23rd concerning council compensation. The Winger Village Section 3 Plating will be before Planning Commission, January 24th. That's the next Planning Commission is the 24th, correct? And it'll, it should be before city council on February 17th. Excuse me, in my manager's report, we discovered that there are a few structures and a couple driveways built in the Paper Street there on Obispy. They've been there since at least 2000 when I look at aerial photos. There isn't anything on the county website showing that they, when they were built, but it is the staff's recommendation that we vacate that portion of Obispy. There's no plan to extend it further. It goes into private property anyway, right into the back. On my manager's report, excuse me, there was an attached aerial, and you can see where, you know, the property at 7,700 and 7,620 Harrington, they, there have been, at some point, the city or the township allowed them to build those structures there.
Didn't we just decide last meeting, vote to demolish the one?
Not.
On Opacy?
Yeah, there was a house on Obispy, yes, that we, yeah, it just so happens that we discovered that there were structures built on this Paper Street.
But, but there was one that was in pretty bad shape, Jack. I thought we voted to.
We did, but this is totally, this is a totally different issue. It's an absolute coincidence that it's on the same street.
Well, technically, it's on, well, the two houses that built are on Harrington.
Yeah. I mean, it, one has nothing to do with, with the other. But you're correct, we, and that house was torn down today, by the way.
So staff has been in contact with at least, we were able to get hold of at least one of the owners of the properties, and I think we're still working to get a hold of the other property owners to talk about them accepting the property. So if, once we get that worked out, legislation will be brought to council to vacate. I mean, because if not, I don't know what else we're going to do with it. We can't, we're not going to extend Obispy, and, you know, they already have items built on it. Some good news, we were again, well, the Finance Department was awarded the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting again this year. This be the 17th consecutive year that the city has received this award. Kevin and the whole Finance Department does a wonderful job all the time. So we were awarded that again. And then in my manager's report, I also put, I thought council would find it interesting because the mayor had made mention in his State of the City, all of the projects that the city has, has done and the cost savings that we've realized. So Randy put together numbers and between Elaine, being able to do all of the paperwork, and Kenny and Randy both being able to do inspections, for just some of the projects, we have saved $178,719 in construction engineering for various projects. And then on the Salem Avenue curb project alone, the city was able to save $400,000 just through construction engineering savings. So I think that's pretty impressive for a staff our size. So I think that's great. Excuse me. Excuse me, sorry. The?
Amanda, excuse me, your predecessor told me that Randy did a great job achieving that, that reduction in the price or getting the grant to do the price.
Yes.
And that we would like to thank Randy for that work.
Yes.
As well as the rest of the staff. Don't misunderstand me.
No.
But the one project Rick said was a lot of work on Randy's part.
It was.
And he got it accomplished.
Absolutely. The Charter Review Commission actually held their first meeting on January 10th. They selected Joyce Dietering to be their chairperson. I'm going to serve as the recording secretary, excuse me. And their next meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 14th at 7:00 PM. They set their regularly scheduled meetings for the second Monday of the month because there are no meetings in this room. So we're going, they're going to meet then. The annual zoning code update will be before council at the February 17th meeting. And these are just really clerical things that they find as they go along, making things match up in the code. It's things that get missed in that first review. There are also items concerning hard surfaces for driveways in, on some of the larger lots in the more rural district, and there are changes there, and those changes are going to necessitate changes to Chapter 905 in just our ordinances so, so they'll match up. So those will be coming together. And those zoning changes are actually available on the website now, and I will send them out to you tomorrow so you can take a look. There have been, excuse me, we had a resident come in last council meeting and talk about short-term rentals here in the city. And I just, I've sent this out twice, but I want to make it clear that in the RSD zone where they are, they are not permitted. And to the best of our knowledge, the one that was operating on Northfield has ceased to operate. We did send them a final notice on the 10th. They have 20 days to appeal that final notice, but if you check Airbnb and VRBO, it's completely blocked out, that it's not available for rent. So hopefully, the issue has resolved itself. I'm only tell. It was, yes. And I think Law Director Dillon sent out something on Monday to all of you concerning the court cases that he had brought into us and her, her assessment of those.
I have a question. Again, this is just kind of, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but it's a legal question. I mean, do you feel like if we did go to, to court over this issue, I mean, do we have, do we have good standing in this? Because, I mean, it does seem to be all over the place, and I just don't want to, I just don't want to be on the wrong side of the issue.
From what I saw, and I found two specific Ohio cases specifically dealing with short-term rentals, basically where the citizens were renting short-term rentals in residential districts where it was not permitted according to their zoning codes. And in both of those Ohio cases, the court ruled in favor of the cities. So from what I've seen from when Jack and I believe was Sean with Zone Co reviewed this, I remember back at the time when they were doing the zoning code, we spoke to him. He felt comfortable with it, and I feel comfortable with the way it's drafted.
And that's all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions for me.
So any questions or comments for a city manager? Okay, well, thanks. I mean, I think everybody's been very busy here and really been doing a lot of good work, so everyone appreciates that. So we don't have any visitors in-house, so I'm not going to ask for visitor comments. And we'll go with the council. Mr. Bachmann?
Evening, everyone. Well, staff and elected officials. Really don't have much to add. Just, you know, thank you to Twin Oaks or, or Oaks Tree. Is that the, that's the brewery up in, I just mentioned a brewery instead of, you can see where my, that just hit me, it's a brewery up by the lake house for them. Thank you to Oaks Tree for their presentation. You know, obviously, looks like they're wanting to move forward here, and we'll probably be hearing from them in a couple months. And we'll see if this project goes in and, you know, brings more people into our community. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
I saw the Northmont Chamber seeing their charlatte tour of businesses here in the community again February 1st through the 10th. So all the time we hear residents saying, there's nothing to do in our community, or we need more to do. So I would encourage you, if you're looking for something to do, to go to northmontchamber.com and see what businesses are participating. And by doing the tour, you can shop and support some of our local businesses. They've been doing a great job with outreach, and we're glad to continue to support our Northmont Chamber. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
I'll take a pass tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Merkel?
Keep it short, and I'll pass, too.
Ms. Kelly?
There's a new business at 8801 North Main Street, Suite 103, that's offered, she's a nurse practitioner. She's new. Thank you, Jack, for visiting with her. She's very appreciative. She does free COVID testing right now, and I took part in being one of her first clients in the COVID test. And she's doing holistic approaches on Suite 104 with IV therapy. And also, she's doing practice on just preventative care and other things that's coming along. But welcome to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Lieberman? Okay, well, I'm going to keep mine short, too, and not really make any comments. Just, again, you know, looking at all the grant money was, it's fantastic. Again, I go back to our small staff. I think you guys do an incredible amount of work, and I appreciate that. And I know everyone, the residents above all, appreciate that also. So we do have need for an executive session tonight, and it is to consider the purchase of property for public purposes. So?
Move, we have a short executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to have a executive session.
Sure.
And second by Mr. Bachmann. Can we have a roll call?
Bachmann?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lieberman?
Yes.
And Stevens?
Yes. So we're going to ask all those not involved in this specific discussion to exit. Thank you.
Don't stay away too long now. Who's he again, Jack? He didn't do the first sections.
He did not. Embrunus did get the first section. Embrunus is no longer.
And we close the executive session.
Okay, we're closing the executive session. Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hurry up, get that camera turned on.
(laughing). We are back in regular session now. Is there a motion?
For adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman.